Okay, we are back from our recess. The time is 1:00 PM and our first item, business item, is justice building update. It's a discussion. I have David Mendez and I believe also our building and grounds director, Jeff Fuller here. Sorry, there's a person in the audience. We'd already called public comment and then we recessed, but we'll do the public comment right at the end here. So, okay.
Good afternoon. David Mendez with Turner and Townsend Hairy to give you your update. Start off with the status of the building. Right now, there's still furniture being installed. They've completed the top floor and the bottom floor and they're working on the court floors then. So, we have our temporary certificate of occupancy which allows us to do what we need to to move in, to actually have occupancy in the building. Our permanent, our final certificate probably will happen next week and that's just the city backchecking the punch list items that they had put forward. And they've completed, let's see, they've completed the lower level and level three. Those are bought off by the city and we've got one and half of level two to get that done the rest of this week and next week. So, they're expecting by next Friday, or Friday after this, that they'll have that completed and get that certificate. Now to the task of costs and I want to start by saying that I'm not 100% on, we have some outstanding bills that I don't have to report on. The contractor was hoping to get to me by Friday their final numbers. I did not get that, so we've, so we've got a little bit of fudge factor here, but where we stand with it right now is we've got about 624,000 remaining in the two contingency items. If we, if we quit today, the contractor's guaranteed maximum price was originally 30 million 440 and we're at 29.8. So, that's where we stand today. I expect that to be within $2,000, $3,000, $4,000 of that number when we're all done. So, as far as soft costs, we've had some underruns there as well. We've got about 260,000 remaining in a, our escalation on this project, I had been experiencing between eight and 15% escalation and as you know, that hasn't happened. We've had very little raising of prices as we've gone along, so we're benefiting from some of that. Jeff did a fantastic job of purchasing the furniture for the project, so we've, we've underrun on that as well. So, so that's all good news. And we have not touched your 1,027,000 in owner contingency. So, project overall, I think, is, is all, all good news. As far as you've asked specifically for my involvement in the project, as you know, the project is, is wrapping up. Talking with Jeff about what support he'll need from me, typically I stick around and take care of the final punch lists and then warranty. That doesn't sound like it's necessary, so my, my work here is, is wrapping up rather quickly and that would mean that I'm coming up short on my, the time that we had allotted for this project, so there's about 30,000, excuse me, 30,000 that will be remaining at the end of my work. I still have probably two to three weeks worth of work left to wrap up in paying off all the bills and giving you a final report on what the balance of the project, you know, what the final numbers are. And I need to spend time with Brandy as well on wrapping that up. But, gone over that scope with Jeff and he's, he's confident that they can, they can handle that portion of the work and so that's what I, that's what I see the future as, so.
Thank you.
Any, any questions regarding that?
Questions?
There's a lot of information in a short period of time.
Well, I appreciate your weekly, largely weekly, weekly updates and I kind of, you know, saw you tailing off and then I trust that if, if on an as-needed basis, if Jeff needed to get ahold of you for any kind of punch list or warranty work, that you would likely be available to assist in that way.
And in that regard, we can leave that, it's, you know, hourly basis if, if there is needed, is there, if there is need for me to continue to do that. One of the things that, that you might want to have me back for is the final, when your warranty walkthrough in the building. That's usually something that everybody has a little, a little bit of knowledge or a lot of knowledge about what went on and can identify those, those items and track them and, and backcheck to make sure everything was done.
Okay. The only other thing is, good job Jeff. You know, we kind of had you going a little back and forth with that. We had tariffs going on at the same time.
Right.
A few extra moving pieces that you probably wouldn't normally be dealing with, so thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Any other questions? No? Okay. That is item one. Next up is law enforcement for contract cities. It's a discussion item and it's really just something I wanted to bring to the board's attention, what's happening and just some of my thoughts about it. You know, one of the things in business that people often refer to as R and D, and most people think of that as research and development, but it's not. It's replicate and duplicate. And there's, after looking at what we're doing with the Hayden City contract, I get the sense that we're creating something from scratch when we don't need to reinvent the wheel. Many, many other people, many other communities, counties especially, have come before us and they have already experienced the challenges that we're facing. So, I've been doing some research and one of the main issues with this is that we have to get our cost numbers correct. And it's not uncommon for the auditing department to provide the cost numbers and the sheriff's office to negotiate the service levels with cities. And one of my concerns is that if we don't have good cost numbers, one, we can enter into agreements that are losing for the county, but two, we want to make sure that we don't enter into agreements that have an arbitrary nature to them where once we offer a certain rate to one city, we really are kind of binding ourselves for other future cities that may want to engage the sheriff's office for these contracts. So, I wanted to put that out there. There's also some other good contracts in the state of Idaho that talk about revenue sharing and where liability falls and things like that. And I think it'd be a good idea for us to pluck those, those things that are the best for this county and incorporate them into the future as well. There will be a workshop with the city of Hayden and I was planning on attending that and I, I don't see myself negotiating for the board unless the board says we would like you to, but I just want to keep you up to date as to what's going on. And my hope is, is that we can work off of numbers from our finance director and say, this is what it really costs us to provide this service and now let's talk about where you want to be and how we can get from this cost to where you want to be and that it works for both parties. And that's kind of where my head is with it. And so I just wanted to bring the board up to speed and see if either of you have any questions.
Noah. If you have samples from other locations, that's totally fine. I know that we have our own contract as well, which we are not working off right now with Hayden. Hayden has provided one to us, so.
Yes.
Yeah, if you've got samples and stuff, I enjoy seeing those.
Well, you know, one of the things too, that really stood out to me is the fact that we have to start identifying how to measure our service levels. Other, other places do it and there's multiple ways to look at it. One example is number of officers per thousand residents. That's the easiest, lowest hanging fruit. It doesn't necessarily reflect workload, but it certainly reflects a ratio. And I believe the Hayden contract actually talks about providing monthly updates on crime stats, right? Well, I've been here for two and a half years, I haven't gotten a crime stat yet for the county. And I think that, you know, it's important that we get our house in order, that we start developing these numbers of what's actually happening in the county and then we can have a relative comparison with a particular city. And that will help drive where resources need to go inside the county and that we can, we can actually establish a level of service that we want and then figure out is that, how much more that would cost and then where it will be acceptable. It's interesting the more I go through this process because every county citizen, including the people in Hayden, pays about $158 and some change toward the justice fund, but that's for a standard county level service. That's not for a dedicated law enforcement in any particular geography. And I think it's important that we can articulate that so people understand what they're actually paying for and what they're supposed to get. And then anything that they pay on top of that is what they refer to as enhanced service, you know, and then that can be identified. So, that's kind of where my head is with this stuff and I just want to bring the board up to speed, see if you have any questions, because of course, we can't talk about these things outside of these public meetings and, and it is county business.
I have some comments on that.
Sure.
I was up at the airport when we were going through the air show and I talked to several people up there and asked them what, what they thought of the city of Hayden not bucking up and being a good soldier. And they're not very happy because we're having to pick up the tab, they're having to pick up the tab for the city of Hayden who isn't, isn't doing their, they should have been doing it a long time ago. I think that came from back in the Wolfinger era.
Well, I, I think that there's been a lot of things that have happened in this community over the years. I've heard a rumor, I don't know if it was true, that the county got some gym equipment for the very first Hayden contract. I have no idea if that's true or not, but either way, it was a little loosey-goosey, if you will, more handshake-like. And the county's getting bigger and so we need to think about having more refined ways of identifying service levels and where the cost is incurred and where that cost should be borne.
Yeah, and on top of that, they said, they would say, well, we've got our own situations where we can, we got our own guns and we can take care of ourselves.
Wow, that sounds great until, you know, something happens. So anyhow, unless there's any other comments or questions, I plan on just kind of proceeding as is with no statement that I am representing the board, just more to help guide it so that something clean can come before the board.
I, I think for me, it's just statistics and numbers and I asked a few weeks ago for some because I had an idea of how I wanted to.
Yeah.
Look at that with the contract, but I have not received them yet.
Yeah, and I'm looking at getting statistics from outside the area because one of my concerns is the fact that we've actually allocated too many resources to the city of Hayden which could skew the numbers to a degree because we're not patrolling as much in the more rural parts of the county. And so, you know, depends on how we look at that, but I hope that once you get those, I'd love to see those as well, just to kind of get a sense of what's happening. Okay, on to item number three. Cootney Metropolitan Planning Organization Office Space Acquisition Invoice. Well, the gentleman who owned the condo, which is across the street, which is where KMPO's headquarters are, passed away and the sons wanted to sell the property. So KMPO began in earnest looking for space to lease and they couldn't really find anything that made sense for them. They don't need a lot of space, but they need more than just an office. And the places they found, I think there was one that may have been a little less expensive than the current lease, maybe, but they all have escalation clauses. And so, the idea was, in the long run, it'll be a cost-saving measure. We are in this joint powers agreement with KMPO and so the board agreed for KMPO to purchase the condo and as such, we're required to provide our pro-rata share for the down payment. And it's, the down payment's 35,000 and our, our pro-rata share is $6,591. And of course, if that condo ever gets sold, that money would come back to the county in pro-rata form. So, it really is just, I'm bringing this to the board's attention. It was not a budgeted item. I don't think anyone was expecting them to buy it this quickly, certainly not last year, but I think the owner of the condo passed between our last budget and today. So unless there's any questions, I was going to push this through the normal payment processing.
Oh, well, yeah, because they're not paying cash for the whole entire thing, so.
No, they got a loan.
Right.
It's actually a lease buyback.
Okay, so it is a government entity, so that was, I guess, legal, went through that and decided that that was okay. And what is the total cost?
See, now you're starting to ask me all these questions. You'd have to give me a second on that, but it was around 250, I think, right around there.
Okay.
Might have been a little more. So, I can get that to you?
900 square feet or something?
Yeah, I mean, it's very small. I've been there. It's like two rooms and a.
Yeah, I've been there.
Little break room or something.
Yeah.
But, you know, you don't have moving costs and IT setup and some of the things, so.
Yeah, no, I just want to make sure that it's all above board because usually government entities cannot lease or bond, you know, I mean, without a bond.
Yes, and that's, yep, and Glenn had been working with council on that to make sure it's gone through the board. The board has already voted on it and everything, so.
Okay.
Mark, you have any questions on that? No? Okay, next up, item four, termination of lease agreement, Lakes Highway District. This is a discussion item. It is on the business meeting today and this is something that I stated when we entered into this agreement. This agreement was a little bit out of the ordinary from previous agreements, or at least what we're traditionally used to seeing, which is a 30-day termination clause. This had a 180-day termination clause. And since then, we haven't spoken at all with Lakes Highway District about any longer-term plans, which was part of the deal, but I feel that it's only appropriate that at least bring it to the board that, you know, we did promise that we would take care of Bayview and the other places this year, that there would be a discussion, that we would, you know, we would entertain a, a longer-term program. But what I don't want us to do as a board is to put ourselves at a disadvantage for the county citizens by waiting to the last minute and then having this forced upon us as a political issue. And I think it's only appropriate that we give Lakes Highway District as much advance notice as possible that, hey, look, you know, unless we're going to start addressing this in earnest now and we can come up with a good plan, they should have as much time as possible to find alternative solutions for managing these boat ramps. So, that's why I brought it up for the board and just want to see if you all have any questions.
Yeah, I'm fine with it. I had thought back in May that we would start talking in July after BOE anyway. So, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it. So, it's giving 10 months notice essentially.
Mm-hmm.
To not renew the agreement and then, yeah, we'll just get stakeholders together and have another workshop and list all of our resources and our ability, you know, and our other outside agencies who may want to, to speak to us about this and, yeah, I think that's fine.
Mark, any questions?
No.
Okay. So, we do have an executive session. I will say that I haven't done anything because the information I got was yesterday and we've kind of had this whole thing, so I won't have anything to say about it, but we can go into.
There's another issue, yeah, which is actually an A issue as well.
Okay. So, with that said, we'll go into public comment. Come on down.
First, I think it's appropriate, my prayers are with the two firefighters we lost Sunday. I don't want to lose track of that. And the sheriff's department does a wonderful job. I want to recognize that. And I also support that deputies receive fair wages in this budget year and stuff. But I am here to say the citizens of Hayden can't expect the rest of Cootney County property tax owners to supplement the cost of their law enforcement, especially when at the last election, on their ballot was 11 to increase their law enforcement and they voted it I got the following cost, I'm going to read into the record, from the Cootney County clerk, Jennifer Lox's letter, this one here. So, as to where are my sources for the information? It's price per citizen for law enforcement plus justice fund. People in Coeur d'Alene pay $611.49. People in Post Falls pay $418.95. People in Rathram pay $367.73. Hayden only pays $226.40.
Can you address the board, please? It's public comment to us, thank you.
Thank you, all right, will do. The following towns have smaller populations than Hayden with their own police department are Rathram, Sandpoint and Lake, Spirit Lake. So, they're smaller than Hayden and they've already got their own police department. Hayden should only receive the amount of law enforcement they are willing to pay. I do not support the county, county contract where the rest of the county property tax owners supplement the cost by even one penny. Second topic, short one too. Here's a copy of the Blaine County Sheriff's FY 2026 operating budget. It includes organization charts, charts that show annual number of calls per service over the years, annual number of arrests, annual number of citations, annual cases generated. It also line items all their costs. It even puts on the org chart where an increase or additional head is requested and where they will fit on the organization chart. Blaine County's population is, this year, is only 25,321. The Cootney County population is 188,450. It's eight times the size of Blaine County and yet Blaine County can afford to do this. I think we need to expect the same from our sheriff's department in Cootney County. There is not, there is not out of line, yeah, for the Cootney County taxpayers to expect an FY 2026 operating budget like Blaine County has. Thank you.
And it's Ron Hartman for the record.
Ron Hartman for the record.
Thank you. Do you have extra copies of that, Ron?
It's my only one.
No, I gave.
Go find one.
I gave, I gave you one earlier, so. Is there anyone else, is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment? Just state your name for the record, please.
Mike Gridley, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. First, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I got a chance to talk to Chairman Matarri a little bit ago, excuse me, this morning, about the issue of the termination of the lease agreement. I've only followed this a little bit on social media, so my information or misinformation is somewhat skewed about what's going on. So Chairman Matarri explained what the board was looking at doing with the termination of the lease and that made sense to me. I guess, I just want to say I support the boat launch in Bayview. I've used that. I think it's used not only for recreation, sailing, boating, fishing, all those activities, but I think it's big for safety. It's a place people would get off the lake and it's something used by people like our parks that you may not use it this year, you may not use it next year, but at some point you might say, hey, let's, you might lose your mind and go buy a boat, you know? But you might decide to go boating or might decide to use it, just like a park, and then you'll use it. So I think it is a countywide amenity that we all benefit from. How we pay for that and who owns it and the niceties of all that, you know, I don't know, but I think it is something that we need to preserve and figure it out. And I think the approach that's suggested in some of your, I know you have people working hard on trying to solve problems of all kinds. I think the, the best approach is trying to get everybody together, as you've suggested, and look at the resources that may be available. I've been involved in trail projects, Centennial Trail and trails like that, bike trails, and there are various, you know, resources, governmental and others, that can sometime be called into play for good causes and I think this is a good cause. So, I just wanted to voice that opinion as a citizen of Coeur d'Alene. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak? Come on up and just identify yourself, please.
Gary McDonald, Bayview, Idaho. And we appreciate the doc that's in, now in Bayview. But just a couple of things. I can remember Commissioner Matarri and Director Snyder, who's also here at the Bayview Chamber of Commerce apologizing and I felt it was sincere about how things just happened and there was no notice. People got all wild-eyed because of what was happening and it was said at the time that they were going to do better, but yet this termination notice, nobody knew about until very recently. Chairman Tweet from the Lakes Highway District was not given even a courtesy call that this was happening and I just think at the least, and I'm not your parent, but it just bad manners. I mean, if we're all a bunch of people that want to get something done, it just seems poor practice not to let people know what's happening. So, I just would hope we could do better. I mean, we had meetings and I went to most of them, if not all, and it was all about the promotion of what they now call stakeholders, of people getting together, trying to figure out what was the right thing to do to protect these assets that belong to the county residents. And it's, with the county growing, it's not an insignificant thing. The value of those ramps is tremendous and as we get more people in the county, they're going to be used more and more. So, if we need to have workshops or meetings to determine what the problem is, then spend some money determining what the county owns, I just think that we need a broader paintbrush on these things and to what seems like singling out Bayview as your problem. Bayview is still in Cootney County and sometimes the commissioners talk like it, Bayview is this separate world entity, but it's not. It's part of Cootney County. And there are lots of boat ramps in the county owned by road districts, so it's not just Bayview. I mean, it's a bigger picture. And if it takes the county in stating that they're going to terminate the lease to, is that, is that what's the county commissioners think? That's what it's going to take to get people behind a program? You can have your own opinion on that, but that's not the case. If you had called any of the participants of the former meetings and said, let's get together, let's have a workshop, lots of those people would come. And whether they be government agencies or just concerned citizens, so I really think that you can do better. I really do. A few things that Commissioner Matarri stated when he made his presentation today, he made statements, Bayview and other places and these boat ramps, so I assume you're talking about more than Bayview, but it wasn't really made clear what you meant by that, but maybe we'll find out in the future. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak?
I do. So.
You want to speak?
Yes, so, after Chairman Tweet.
Okay. Okay.
Good morning. I'm Rod Tweet with Lake's Highway District, Chairman of the Board. If I heard you correctly, you said that you wanted to get together and do some more discussions as to whether it's a longer lease or what you had planned, and I appreciate that, and I'm all in favor of that. What came across when we, when I found out about the agenda last night and this morning was that it sounded like you were going to terminate. And that was very alarming to me because we didn't get any notification of that at all. And, but I, I am more than willing to sit down with any and all of you to discuss what kind of plan we can put together, because I think that, that boat ramp definitely needs to be protected, and we need to work toward a solution that actually satisfies everybody. And after all, we do work for the constituents of Cootenay County, taxpayers, and I think we need to have that in mind in whatever decision we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Duncan, you want to?
Sure. So again, it's public comment, it's not for back and forth, so I will address my comments to the Chair. Thank you for bringing this forward because as a board, we cannot discuss it unless it's in public. So if you would have reached out to citizens or to Lake's Highway District, that would have been an issue, until you talked to your co-commissioners and get a sense of, is this the right direction or not? So I appreciate you following protocol and making sure that the board was looped in before anyone else. I do say that I am looking forward to getting stakeholders together and really hashing out the problems. There are people in Bayview who use the launches and they are not paying for them, and they, that's causing some of the issue. So I don't feel like things have been done in good faith in the past, and so I would like to very much ask for the citizens and our other stakeholders to negotiate in good faith and not cause problems. So it seems like we don't give enough notice or we give too much notice, we don't win. So I would just, I'm looking forward to getting around the table again and talking about the issues.
Thank you. And I would actually like to say something too to the board, that the last discussion I had with anyone at Lake's Highway District was, I can't talk to you individually and that we should have board-to-board communication. And I think that's exactly the way it should be. Because I tried it the other way and it didn't seem to really yield any fruit. The fact is that this lease agreement, which was handed to us at the 11th hour, I mean, there really was no time to go back and forth because we had the issue of a doc we were trying to get installed for the benefit of the boaters in this county. And in that agreement, it said a six-month termination. Notice, okay? Notice for termination. And that is what today's discussion is about, is about giving notice for termination, not terminating the lease. In fact, anyone who is a signatory on that lease ought to know that there is a six-month termination notice, period. And that's what today is. So all of the overreaction, which is exactly what it is, is, was completely unnecessary. And that, you know, as a courtesy to the Lake's Highway District, they are given ample notice to know that we do not have any intention of renewing it, given the amount of communication we've had between the day we signed it and today, because there's been none. And so I don't know what, what the thinking is, but at least now there is a clock and now hopefully people will want to talk and they'll bring some proposals to the board as far as what they want our Parks and Waterways Division to do. But the reality is that that is a fee-based service. It is not a taxpayer-subsidized service. And if we can't collect the fee or the cost of the service, then I think we, as a board, are doing a disservice to every county citizen. Yes, the Bayview citizens are county citizens, but there are citizens in other parts of the county, and it's not up to them to pay their taxes to help out any other one place. Our job is to make sure that it's uniform as far as the service levels and the benefits that county citizens get. That's at least what I believe. So hopefully we will be able to engage Lake's Highway District Board and come up with some creative ideas that work for them and work for the county. Commissioner Irvin, did you want to say anything or? No. Since we're on public comment, we're taking advantage of it up here, but, all right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak who has not spoken already? 1:35.
Nope, nope, nope. I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 742061A.
Second.
Commissioner Irvin?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Matarri?
Aye.